What happens?
Nothing, just.
Oh, you changed the plug.
Yes, you did. That's good. Or no. No, that's good.
And also, I asked during the meeting, when someone speaks, that they present themselves by stating their name so it can get recorded correctly because not everyone has video.
Okay. So are you ready, Heather?
Yes.
Okay, so it's seven o'clock. We'll call the meeting to order. And in attendance, I don't know if we'll go around the horn. So this is Mike Steers present.
Bob Mercy present.
Green present.
Sal Marinosi present.
Mark Katie present.
Mary Satell present.
Bob Torture present.
Okay, so we have a quorum.
Who's opposed a present?
Seven of nine present.
We have a quorum and we'll start the meeting. First of item of business is to review the minutes from the September first meeting.
I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes as presented.
Second, Mark.
Any additions, deletions, corrections? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is anyone opposed?
Mike, Mike, I'm sorry to interrupt it, Heather.
Yes.
Can you give me a minute to try to fix the recording? For some reason, we're having overlapping.
Okay, that's fine.
All right, give me one more, okay?
Yep.
Zoom is great, isn't it?
Seems to be an echo.
It will be in ten years.
Be great in ten years.
You're right. No, probably not going to be around by then.
What? You hurt too well.
Who said that?
I said that.
You will be.
You will be. You're just a puppy.
Heather, you tell us when you're ready to go. So with no audio, she probably can't tell if we're doubling. So why don't we look at the first agenda item, which is the administrative subdivision of lot sixteen lots twenty three dash one and twenty three dash two for David Ahern and Michael Massa. I see Don Maderos is present. I thought I saw Mike Massa a minute ago. Oh, there he is. Yeah. And Mr. Hearn. So who wants to present the administrative subdivision?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Don Maderos for David Ahern and Mike Massa. As you mentioned, they're in attendance. For brevity, I'll just start off and explain what we're trying to do. And just a little bit of background, I think the board members may recall, we back in the pre-COVID days, I think it was maybe last October or November, we came before the this board concept plan. And for a two lot, one time only subdivision of both landowners, and they are obviously abutting landowners. And so tonight's administrative subdivision is really the first step to get to that get to that end goal of each Mr. Ahern and Mr. Massa doing a one-time subdivision. Can you hear me? Okay, I'm getting some background static here. Okay.
We can, we can hear you. Okay, go ahead.
Good, good. So so tonight's administrative subdivision, it's it's the first step in a in where the where the end result would be David Ahern and Mike Massa each do their own one-time only subdivision. So so what the administrative subdivision tonight does is it sets up, it adjusts and sets up the common boundary line for the next step, which would be each each owner doing an administrative subdivision. So each existing property now, Mike Massa owns the lot to the south lot, existing lot twenty three dash two, proposed lot twenty three dash four. It has a house number one eighty five on it in approximately five and a half acres. David Ahern owns the lot to the north, existing twenty three dash one, proposed lot twenty three dash three. That's six acres. It has a house in the back, a garage and a driveway to get from the road to the to the house, as shown on the plan. So what 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 we're what we're trying to do is adjust the existing boundary line between the two lots. The basically the the easterly half to set up our next step, which would be, as I said, a one-time only of each lot. We know we are going to need variances for David Ahern's lot because what 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 we know in the existing condition, which is probably easiest to see in the upper right-hand corner of the plan, there's a detail. And it shows Mike Mass's house is about thirteen point seven feet from the from the existing boundary line. Well, part of what we're trying to accomplish is to give Mike some more usable land around his house. So we're we're proposing to increase his side setback from thirteen point seven feet to forty five point six feet. In the process of doing that, we are basically taking some frontage away from David Ahern's lot and adding that frontage to Mike's lot. However, at the end of the day, what the the swap of land between the two owners is essentially equal. What we're taking from one, we're giving to the other. So each each owner ends up with probably within a hundredth of an acre of what what they have now. But but the layout becomes much better for the for the next step being the the two one-time only subdivisions.
I have a question. This is Sal Marinosi.
Yep.
On Long Highway, then you're diminishing your frontage on Long Highway, correct?
Of of the northern lot of David Ahern's lot. That's correct.
And and you're going from a non-conforming lot width on the on the highway to a smaller non-conforming width, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, I just want to understand it in your in your explanation. Thank you. Continue.
Yep, absolutely correct. So if you look at note number seven on the plan, we are, we are basically saying that this administrative subdivision will require variances from the zoning board. And the variances would be for David Ahern's lot, new lot twenty three dash three, which would be a variance for lot frontage to go from existing frontage of sixty five feet to a proposed frontage of thirty feet. And also for lot width, the the existing lot width doesn't meet the requirement as does the existing frontage. But we will be reducing the lot width in accordance in the same time and as a result of reducing the frontage. The 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 line, the new property line between the two lots labeled on the plan is is new property line. What that will eventually be, to give you a sneak preview of of the end game, that will eventually be the center line of a proposed driveway easement, which will be the driveway easement for both one-time only subdivisions. So to say it differently, what we're proposing to do is is two abutting one-time only subdivisions that are going to share the driveway easement. And reason we're doing that is to try to limit land disturbance by only using one driveway. We we will be removing the existing driveway on David Ahern's lot, which goes through the through the middle of the field. It kind of breaks up the vista of the field from Long Highway and we're going to be that basically that existing gravelous driveway is going to be removed. And it'll the access will be replaced with the proposed gravel driveway, which will be part of the one-time only subdivisions. We believe Mike Mass's reconfigured lot does not require variances. We've increased the lot frontage to be more than the minimum we've we've maintained, or actually, we've increased the lot width. The existing lot width doesn't conform, but the proposed lot width does. So where, and as I said, we're taking away the the side setback from his house of thirteen feet to forty five feet. So where in a lot of ways, I think we're making both lots better. And and I know Mr. Ahern and and Mr. Masser spent a lot of time working together to come up with a layout that's going to serve both of them best. And and serving them best, a lot of that objective has to do with creating something that's aesthetically pleasing, environmentally, you know, respecting the environment and and overall improving, you know, the the existing condition. So just to finish quickly, so the next step, so if the board sees fit to approve this administrative subdivision tonight, we would ask for a conditional approval conditioned upon receiving the required variances from the zoning board. If that happens tonight, our next step then would be to go to the zoning board. And if we're successful there, we would then come back to this board for for approval of the administrative and then the next step, approval of the two one-time onlies.
So to to that, thank you, Don. That's very good. If I can, you're asking us for an administrative subdivision to move the lot line. And the result of that would reduce the frontage on on one of the existing lots.
That's correct.
You're going to go to the zoning board to get permission to do that.
Correct.
If the zoning board should decline your position or or permission to do that, then then nothing's changed essentially. You're you're you don't have to go forward with the administrative subdivision. You could just leave everything the way it is.
That's correct.
So you're you're just asking us to do an initial admin prove an initial administrative subdivision as step one of your multi-step plan to be able to present that to zoning.
That's correct.
Okay. Does anybody else have questions about that?
What in in the final, Sal Marinosi again, in the in the final, what will the final draft of this look like?
So the the final step being the the two one-time only subdivisions, Sal, I assume?
Yes, or or beyond that.
Oh, no, that that is that is the that is the end end action and and result that we're looking to get. So Mike Mass's lot on the south, which you see is labeled twenty three dash four. The eastern half of that, the adjacent to Long Highway with the house well and and a new septic system that Mike's in the process of getting approved, that'll be one two-acre lot. And in in the back half of the Massa property will be a vacant building lot. So that'll be his one-time only subdivision.
With access from the other lot.
Well, with access from the shared easement, the the property line will run down the center of the gravel road. So access won't be an issue, but they'll have cross easements for for the other half of the road and for utilities for the other half.
And that access being in that reduced frontage portion.
I think we're putting the cart in front of the horse. Right now, all we're talking about is an administrative subdivision. That's it. And the only reason it came before you is because there'll be two other steps as part of this. But right now, all we're talking about is the administrative subdivision, which is to move the lot line. That's all we're talking about right now.
I understand that, Mark, but he's asking us for an opinion on reducing a lot with frontage.
No, he is. He's submitting a plan to us that is going to require a variance.
I understand that. That's why I asked the question.
Bob Green.
I don't have a problem with it.
Bob Green has a question. If we reduce the frontage there, can we approve this plan tonight? Or does it go to zoning first?
It goes to zoning first. Yeah.
Why why are we even seeing this? Why isn't it going to zoning then come back to us for recommendations?
Well, normally, we would consider this with zoning's approval.
Contingent upon.
Contingent upon their approval. We're not approving this plan, though.
We're we're approving this plan contingent upon zoning's approval.
Right. He's not going to be able to record it.
No, that's correct. It's a preliminary stage of this of an administrative subdivision. Yeah. So Bob, we're we're tonight, Bob, we're asking for conditional preliminary approval conditioned upon receipt of necessary variances.
You have all those listed, all your variances?
Yeah, note number seven, note number seven, we list the two variances needed.
Once you get the variance, if if the variance is given, you come back to us then.
That's correct. We would come back for final administrative approval. And and upon receipt of that, we would then be submitting the two one-time onlies.
Okay.
Well, if we do it contingent, if we do a contingent upon zoning, if zoning approves it, then the administrative administrative subdivision is then approved. And then you would go forward with the one-time only. That's 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 another way to do it, sure. Because I mean, if we if we approve it contingent upon zoning, that means one zoning says it's okay, then it's approved. We've we've said that we could accept it if zoning can accept it.
Is there any reason why we wouldn't move forward and and give them a an approval on the plan submitted tonight based upon
Well, because the zoning board. Because it's a zoning violation as it is pictured before us tonight. So if zoning doesn't approve that, then it can't it can't go forward.
Right. Well, even if we approve it tonight and zoning doesn't approve it, it still can't go forward.
Right.
Correct. So I would, I would make a motion that we accept this as submitted for pre-approval to be sent off for consideration by the zoning board.
I'd second that.
So we have a motion and a second to approve and send it to the zoning board?
Yes. For consideration.
For approval.
For approval.
All those, is anybody opposed to that?
I think we have to roll call, Mike.
Okay, Mark Katie.
Approve.
Mike Steers, aye. Bob Green.
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Robert Torture?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Sal?
Aye.
All in favor? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So now we we move that that's that's our first planning board business in several months, anyway.
So now
Congratulations, everyone, for providing that.
We passed, yes. We move into special subjects and petitions for zoning relief. The first one this evening is from William and Amy Corbett with regard to a request for their property, plot thirty three, lot seventy three. And I believe Mr. Holland is going to present this.
Uh-oh.
It had to be Sal.
I don't.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I hope I don't hack this machine over. God. Yeah, I represent Bill and Amy Corbett. They own the property at eighty nine Butts Rock Road. They've lived there for approximately since nineteen October of two thousand fourteen, so they're about six years. They're both in their seventies. They'd spent summers here. They bought this house and they're going to retire shortly. The house that they have, it's has a lovely view of the water, all of the whole front of it. The house needs a substantial amount of work. The present house covers approximately nine and a half percent of the lot. If the variances that we're asking for are granted, it will go up to nine point eight eight percent. So it's still under the 10% lot coverage as provided for in the ordinance. Bill Smith and Ralph Irvin prepared a plan which was given to the the zoning board as part of this presentation. The house is in the northern part of a lot, which is the as from south to north, it gets higher, the elevation goes up and it's it's a nice view. The house was built in the sixties and was added on to and added on to and changed around. When it became time for them to retire, things had to be done and it became obvious that an awful lot of work had to get done since it has very little cellar, which is a garage, and the rest of it is on a slab. So as part of what they want to do is that they want to put on the north side or the backside an addition, it's a bedroom, a downstairs bedroom. And that would have an upstairs to it. And then an upstairs over, if you looked, if you have a copy of the plan, it'll say proposed addition second floor only. So the the downstairs part is very small, but it has an upstairs. It does not go out past the existing building that is there now. In other words, the existing building is, if I can read the 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 plan, is approximately seventeen and a half feet from the boundary on the north. The proposed addition only goes out to match that seventeen feet. One part of it happened with basically a second floor over the existing area, and the other is up and down. So that the whole thing is still, it's not infringing any more than it is now. There's another small addition, which is still within the the same footage that the existing build is now is a variance of about three feet wide for closet space. This house is, I I don't know how it was designed, but it's the kind of thing when you go in, you you've got to walk down three stairs, take a left, up three stairs, around a corner, down four stairs. This is what they're trying to get rid of all of that and and make it much more livable. The house as such, if you look at the plan prepared by Bill Smith, you'll notice there are a ton of trees behind there. And we showed you some with with the application, there was there were some photos so that if you went to the north of this property, the the lot to the north is vacant, no house there. And what happens is it even dips down a little bit so that it's lower than this one. Then there are two other lots that are vacant, one of which is being built on. I don't know if it's the the second or the third one, but there's there is no house behind this lot directly behind it or to the northwest. All of the neighbors have been advised of what was going on. They've been sent notices of and then the neighbors were met by Mr. and Mrs. Corbett. They've known them for a while. We have a point, we have photos which were part of the application, basically photo two and three. And if you look at those, the trees are such that from the lot to the north, you can't even basically see the house that amounts to anything. The the addition is going to be on the second floor. It goes up to approximately a little over twenty seven feet. It doesn't go over the thirty feet. It stays within the the requirements of the Chase Point Homeowners Association. And they've said that they have no objection to it. They've approved this this addition. The Corbets are are are, like I said, somewhat elderly. The house they live in in Boston has a second floor. That's where the the main bedrooms are. And that's, they want to build this upstairs, taking away some of the room, the bedrooms downstairs and making it a pantry, a bathroom, and some that are needed down there, one of which is for you, a mechanical room. As I said, the cellar, if you saw the house, is basically a two-stall garage that is underneath the house. The septic system is is fine. It's a Bill Smith is taking care of that, and it does not require a a new septic system. So the total building height will be twenty seven and feet, four inches. It won't exceed the ordinance. And the addition that goes on the back is not going to exceed what's already back there now. It's just going to bump out some of the house to meet that. So that that's about it. The the trees, there's not a neighbor problem. There's not a a problem from the Chase Point Association. And it's not going to hurt anybody new or be harmful to anybody. And that's the basis of our application for the petition for a variance. Basically, it's it's not going out any farther. It's not going to encroach farther than it already is. It's just going to square that line off in the reef.
So Ray, the the Chase Point, they have the association. This has been presented to them and and they they've written a letter or whatever and said they're fine with it?
Yeah, they've they've had a meeting with it and they they have no problem with it. Because that was the first thing I told them to do. If they if they if they couldn't square that away at Chase Point, there wasn't any sense calling ahead. So and if you look at the, Michael, if you look at Chase Point, take a ride down there, you'll find that far, far more of the houses now have second floors. Some of the earlier houses, like Don Montal's house, which was a one-floor, he put a second floor. Deandra, one-floor, they put a second floor. The majority of the houses all have second floors down there. This is not something that that's out of the ordinary.
No, and it stays within the 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 height provisions or requirements of Chase Point. So they have their own code.
They do. It's twenty-two feet, and it's twenty-two feet from the highest point of the lot. So if you look at the lot, the lot sort of like goes down here. So from here up, it's twenty-two feet from the under the town code, it's thirty feet. And it, when you do it according to the town measurements, it's only, this is only going to be a twenty-seven foot bridge line. And the line that's going to be for the second floor does not increase. It's going to be the same as it is now. It's just filling in some of the lumps or the holes.
Okay.
That's about it. And if there's anything else I can answer, I'll be glad to.
Well, I I I think this is in line what what we're trying to do for people who want to some of the elderly that wants to stay here and utilize the home they have, isn't it, Michael?
Yeah. So.
Well, I make caution that we accept it as submitted.
Right, I'll second it.
Before you do that, though, I just want to make sure that we note in the records that the ISDS has been already approved by DEM. So that
Michael, yeah, Bill Smith said it it's fine if that, and we have no objection, if all of a sudden somewhere along the line, it's it's a four-bedroom system and there's only going to be four bedrooms now. Bill Smith says we don't have to do anything and that that's okay. If if it becomes an issue, I I can tell you the cost to fix this house, they're going to put it in. Because it's not something where you're going to spend this kind of money to to have a system that doesn't doesn't work. But there's no, we've been told, Bill Smith has told me, he would be here tonight, but he's at the Tivon Planning Board. So he said that this, it meets the requirements of DEM.
Well, who who made the motion?
I did. I made the motion. So I'll I'll just add that to my motion that we accept it as submitted. And then proviso that it meets all of the requirements of DEM.
I'll second that.
Any other questions? So roll call, Mark.
In favor.
Mike's in favor. Bob Green.
Favor.
Mary. Uh, Bob.
In favor.
Robert.
Favor.
Sal.
In favor.
Okay, we're all done. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, uh, our next, um, petition, uh, is, uh, with regard to a property on Goodrich Lane. And, um, it, uh, let me see, Sessors Flat A, Lot sixty-one. And, uh, Mr. Holland, I believe, is going to present that, uh, as well.
Thank you. Um, thi- this is a, a lot that's on Goodrich Lane, which is a private robe. It's a two-acre lot, basically. It has two dwellings on the lot. I didn't represent the Melly family, which is eleven Goodrich, uh, Lane, uh, LLC, uh, when they purchased it. But the lawyer who did, um, because it has two houses on the lot, went to, uh, the building inspector and got a letter from the building inspector that says that the two lots, in his opinion, were lawful non-conforming users. They then purchased the property. Um, the second house, there were two houses. There's a main house and a smaller house. Uh, 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 let's just call it a guest house for no other, uh, other term. This guest house is in the easterly side of the lot, uh, in a butt, uh, Ben Dawson's property. And it's approximately four feet from the boundary line. It's in, it's nestled into a very large hedge. It's right up against the hedge and it really intrudes on the Dawson property. Um, it's another disaster of a house and they want to, uh, they fixed it and it, it, it's not fixable. Uh, they've been advised by a, a local contractor that the best thing they can do is to tear it down and start all over again. So they went to see the Pete Maderis, the, the building inspector. And because there are two houses on this lot, uh, which are grandfathered, um, and Bill Moore, the building inspector, sent a, there's a re- recorded a zoning certificate in the land evidence records that says that. I, I don't, do you have that, Michael?
Uh, we have seen that, I believe, yes.
Okay, so that you have that. And so what he said, what the, the building inspector said is the best thing to do is to knock it down and move it. So, uh, right now it's four feet from the line and the proposal that we're going to the zoning board with is to knock it down. It would be moved approximately forty-nine feet from the boundary line, which makes Mr. Dawson very happy, uh, because now it's not up on his line. It would be moved over, uh, the house would be rebuilt. It would be a few square feet smaller than the existing house because the existing house i- i- it's very poorly planned. It's not well-planned for, uh, the way it should be. Uh, let's put it that way. Um, the house is, uh, let's see. Uh, I dropped the plan off down there. The, the, the house is going to be, it's only, it's twenty-four feet high, won't exceed that. And, uh, it currently is served by a septic system that is a cesspool. So by moving it, it's going to get a new septic system, which Bill Smith is drawing again, uh, which complies with DEM. And it's going to be moved forty-nine feet away from the boundary instead of four feet, which violates the zoning orders. But that was predated. So, um, and that's the only way we can get it is to go to the zoning board to move a non-conforming use. You have to get it by a special permit. It's not a variance. It's a special permit. Um, it's not a lot coverage issue. There's plenty of land there. Uh, uh, we checked out with, uh, uh, Pete Maderis, the building inspector. So it's, it's a win-win thing. Uh, a new septic system, a new house, and it gets it out of the neighbors' hedges, uh, basically. So that's what we're looking for, uh, for, uh, favorable opinion from the, uh, the zoning board. I mean, from the planning board and then we'll go with the zoning board in, in a couple of weeks.
Any questions?
Nope.
There's an existing dwelling that's twenty-five, twenty-two hundred square feet.
I'm sorry.
That's the main house.
Yeah, that's the main house.
Right.
All right. So the only one you're talking about is the one that's eighteen hundred square feet that you're going to move out forty-nine feet.
That's right. In other words, the, Bob, the house that's eighteen twenty-two is really, I think, eighteen forty-eight now. So when it gets moved, it, it, it's getting a little bit smaller and it's going to be only twenty-four feet high, which was, uh, uh, I think, uh, that's what the provisions of the ordinance are.
House number eleven.
I'm sorry?
It's house number eleven.
Right.
Eleven A is the main house.
Yeah.
Yep.
And the septic system, uh, is approved for both houses?
No, it will be. I mean, they, 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 they have, Bill submitted a plan and that'll be, uh, I'm sure the contingency of the, uh, the zoning board a review. But the, the septic system for the big house is fine. It's for the little house that's no good.
So you're going to have a new house that's smaller.
Yeah.
With a new septic system that, uh, is no, uh, has the side yard setback that doesn't exist today.
That's correct. It's, it's kind of win-win-win. And just to give you an idea, I think the little house, this is the high rent district. I think the little house is taxed at something like a million one and the other one's like a million three. And if you saw that little house at a million one, you'd fall over. I mean, it, it's, it's, it's a dump. Um, it, well, I have to be careful what I say.
Right. It, it is very strange because when you drive in the driveway, one of the corners of the house you can't even see because it's tucked into the hedges. So.
It's got that Spanish look. It looks like it's covered with trees and whatever. And, and the neighbor is very happy that this is going away.
Well, I'll make a motion.
Yeah, go ahead, Sal. You do it.
We find that the end result of the special use permit will result in no impact on the comprehensive plan and will comply with the goals of the comprehensive plan. NH one dot small F, which is insu- insu- ensures meeting zoning regulations and complying with the building officials' rules and regulations.
I'll second it.
So we'll take a roll call, Mark.
In favor.
Mike's in favor. Bob Green.
Favor.
Mary.
Yep.
Bob.
Yes.
Robert.
Yes.
Sal.
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
You just have one question for Mr. Holland.
Oh, dear.
No, 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 they, they, you're all done. You could have asked that before.
When, what, when was he being careful with what he said? That's not him.
No, I, I haven't learned that lesson right. You're right. You, you really are right on Sal on that one. I, I, I have to admit it. You can't teach an old dog new tricks.
Oh, yeah, you can.
You can. He just does them slower.
Have a good.
Thank you all. Have a good.
Yep, cheers.
Uh, so, uh, the next, uh, petition is, uh, Paris Saint Pierre, uh, for a property lo- located at nine William Sisson Road for a front yard, uh, variance. So I'm not sure who is, is sending that to see.
I am Bruce.
Okay, Bruce, thank you.
Yeah. Yes, Bruce Reposo.
Yep.
Basically, I started renovating that house and I, we did draw up a new front porch. And not knowing that the setback is fifty feet and the main house is fifty-one and the porch is six feet off the house, which goes into the setback for like five feet. And then as I started, so that, that's when Pete told me I had to go to zoning for that. So then I, I'm doing, I did an addition on it. That's where you see on, I don't know if you guys have the plan. That's, that's about some addition to the right side of the proposed south elevation page.
Yeah, but that's setback farther than the existing house though, by what, five, six inches?
Like a foot.
Oh, is it? Okay.
Yeah, like a foot. So. And then when I started stripping, I stripped two layers of siding off, had vinyl on top, then old, uh, cedar underneath that. It was a lot of rotten throughout the front wall. There's actually a lot of rot throughout the whole house. But when I got to the front wall, I literally rebuilt from the south, uh, on the, from the front of the house to the right corner, all the way into the foyer, which that's the front door. And I totally had to rebuild that whole first floor wall and all, and the sill plates. So I had a, the, the existing porch had to be removed because it was, it was all brick and it allowed a lot of water to get behind it. It was rotten. There was a lot of rotten where the porch was, the existing brick porch to begin with. So now there's no porch there. So I'm waiting for approval so I can put a new porch back. And.
So, uh, this is Sal Marinosi. Are you, are you exceeding the line, the existing line that was there before?
A little bit, yes. Yes, a little bit.
What's a little bit?
Uh, I, a foot, because the old porch was like five feet off. I'm going six.
Okay.
So let, let me, a couple of things here. The, the plan should show the point, Sal's point there of what the original porch was. And that the new front porch is only going to be X dimension larger than the previous one.
Oh.
So th- then conceptually, you're, you're asking for, I'm, I'm going to just pick a number. If you said one foot, it's one foot greater or closer to the, the road than it was before, then basically that's what you're asking for. To have an additional foot, uh, front porch encroachment in your front yard.
Yes.
Okay.
Actually, actually, the old porch also had the steps and then it had another slab landing that was about one step above the gr- existing grade.
Okay, so I'm, I'm just, i- it's important to, because you're not asking for the whole porch. You're just asking for a little more than you already had.
Yes.
I think.
Instead of asking for an encroachment of six feet, you're asking for an encroachment of one foot from the existing line of the stair, the porch.
Correct.
So.
But it sounds better that way.
Yes. And you, and I think your drawing looks very good.
Oh, thank you.
The, the western exposure where you're eighty percent done, I'm going to say is great. And all the new windows and the trim look terrific.
Oh, thank you.
I think that it's important and, uh, here up, uh, the variance calls for, um, the street line setback from the street line. And as I read the zoning definition, the street line is really the property line. It's not the travelway. And the plan that you gave us sort of measures forty feet back from the travelway of William Sisson Road. I don't know, uh, if, if that's a technicality or what. But before you get to the zoning board, I think you want to be very sure of the measurement from the street line as defined by zoning.
Okay.
Okay? And, and again, and not the William Sisson, because the plan, uh, that we got shows the measurement from the travelway. And so th- there's a considerable difference there. I don't want you to get caught up in, in that measurement because I think what you're doing, back to Mark's point, you're asking for one foot of relief from what was there.
Right.
And what you're presenting looks terrific. All right? So I don't, I, I don't want you to get, get caught in the, in the definition world.
I get you. So basically I'm asking to go one foot bigger than the existing.
Exactly.
And if you have, if you just take with you a sketch that can show them where the end of the existing was and how little you're going to increase it, then that, that will carry a lot of weight. The other thing, Bruce, is, um, on the application, it's Lot thirty-nine dash one, not Lot thirty-nine.
Oh, okay.
So you, you might want to correct that.
Tom Prinsby filled out my, Tom Prinsby filled out my application for me.
Okay.
All right. Also, on the, on the drawing that I'm looking at, it, am I, am I reading this correctly? I see forty-five point twenty-five feet from William Sisson to the porch.
That's correct.
Yep.
And so that's, that's, that's the question there, Bob.
Right, right, right. So I would.
The measurement is.
Go ahead.
The measurement as shown is from the travelway.
Right, that's correct.
Not from the street line.
Right.
I, I, I think at this point, it's, in my view, I, I, I don't think that measurement, as you were saying before, Mike, is as important as the increase in size of the porch. In other words, he's coming out a foot and, and a, another foot on a new construction on something that was torn down. And, and it's, he's only going to be encroaching another foot. And if, I, I think he doesn't want to emphasize that if that's all he's doing.
I, I think Mike's point is very, very important. And that's one of the things that Bruce is going to have to check out is the property line because it's very clear that it's the property line from the property line. Now, where the travelway is, oftentimes the town may own another piece off of the travelway, which is the town. So he's, he's going to have to know exactly where the property line is in order to measure back from there.
Yeah, there's even a culvert shown there.
I, I, I went over that with Peter. And he came to the site and we, he measured from the travel line.
Okay, I, I'm, I'm sure he measured, if he came, he measured from the property line. So.
No, he measured, we held the tape measure together. He, he measured from the travel line.
Well, I, I, again, what we're trying to say is you got to, you got to actually measure from the property line.
Well, if Peter went out there, if the building official went out there and measured with him, I'm sure Peter went to the property line. Now, maybe the property line goes right to the edge of the pavement. I don't know. But if Peter, the building official, went out there and measured it, then I'm sure that measurement must be accurate.
Right, okay.
So.
But the other, the other thing is, I think, um, Bruce, you also said there was a slab that might have been part of the old, uh, front porch.
Well, it was, uh, because the steps from the front porch came down onto this slab which had stone on it with brick. And that was above the gr- existing grade of like eight inches, a normal step.
The, the slab was added afterwards because as the owner aged, the last step from the bricks down to the walkway was oversized. So when she got elderly, they had to pour that slab to lessen that step for her.
Oh, okay. You know some history on the house then.
So we could classify that as part of the front porch.
Sure.
So then really, I mean, if you measure from that part, uh, Bruce, to the, uh, boundary line, maybe, uh, maybe he's not really asking for anything.
Well, he would still need to ask because.
No, he would ask.
Right. But, but, but you would not exceed what was existing possibly.
But you want to make a motion?
I, I, I have a motion if.
I, I know you got one circling around. I know you got one circling around.
I can see it burning.
We find, we find that this variance has a minimal impact on the comprehensive plan and it meets the comprehensive plan goals of HC one dash A, which is agricultural land use, HC one B, which is preservation of stone walls and older buildings and the restoration and upgrade of an older house to keep its, uh, restore, yeah, historic appearance.
I'll second it.
I kind of thought you would, Sal.
And, and any further discussion?
Thought I would.
Okay, I'll do a roll call, Mark.
In favor.
Mike's in favor. Bob Green.
Favor.
Mary.
In favor.
Bob Murphy.
In favor.
Robert.
In favor.
Sal. Sal?
In favor.
All right, we're all in favor. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Thanks, Bruce.
Good luck, Bruce.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You too.
Thanks.
Stay safe.
You too. Thank you.
So moving on to, um. Planning board business. The first item, uh. Is additional discussion with regard to rights of way. I have to confess, I haven't done any more on that since our last meeting.
I'm not opposed to tabling it to a future meeting if if that's the board's.
I I agree. That's something where we're. It'll be good if we're one on one in a meeting to discuss rather than this way.
Yes, I agree.
We don't need anything. We just all agree.
I I make a motion that we table the right of way issue until a future date to be announced.
I'll second that.
So Mark's in favor?
Yes.
Mike's in favor. Bob Green's in favor?
Yeah.
Sal's in favor.
Sal's in favor?
Bob Murphy's in favor. In favor.
And Robert?
In favor.
Thank you. Uh, so next item is with regard to checklist. And you all have a, uh. A copy of a complete checklist for minor subdivisions.
Yeah, I only added one. Um, they're all different in some little respects. But basically, this is the checklist and application together. But to me, the most important part was the, uh, the last two pages. You know, where we we have the sign offs. Which we've not, we've not required in the past. Um, but we're having so many issues with right of ways and so forth. That I think one of the ways to maybe help eliminate that would be to have the sign offs from the police and fire chief. Um, and in some cases, we may even need it from the highway department. If we have curb cuts or or something, it's gonna be required to make a an official curb cut.
Yeah, you got the water department, that's.
Well.
So so Marcus, the the idea is that, um. Without sort of saying that we should start doing what we're supposed to be doing.
I never said that.
And follow.
Yeah. I mean, we 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 short cut it and it worked for a while. But now my concerns is that, um, by letting it slip, it it's caused issues.
Right.
Maybe would not have been caused had we followed it in its entirety from before. And we've never really required, well, actually, that's not true. Dick, Dick Rogers, for a while, they did require that we, um, have the checklist with every application. Um, but then we kind of got away from that.
But so what we.
So maybe.
We want to do is re-enter, uh, this into our procedure.
Well, yes, and and I think it's important that we, um, have a a general communication to. That the civil engineers that we normally work with and the applicants so that it's not a surprise as we've been. Maybe aired on the size of accommodation.
Yeah, I I think we should pick a date at which we would want to enforce this. Uh, I think then we we list, like Mike said, a a letter to all of the ones that we normally deal with. But then I think it should appear in the Secana Times a couple of times too. Just so, you know, somebody who that we don't see all the time has something to submit, like John Bragger, we don't see him all the time. But, um, you know, he might might see it in the Secana Times. And if he has something to submit, then he's going to. Matter of fact, I know he's gonna be submitting something soon, so.
So you can tell him. You can give him a heads up.
Yeah, I I I think it's important that we advertise it as well as send the letters out. Um, but. First of all, I guess we need to decide what date we want to use. Um, I was originally thinking January, but I'm thinking that January may not afford. All of the people that we deal with time to prepare themselves for this. So maybe we look at, you know, February or March.
Well, mi- might I suggest that we, um, and I confess, I didn't read through all the items. Uh, but it seemed to me the last one, we did do this more strictly. That there were some dimensional things and a couple of things in the checklist that we thought we might want to reword or, uh.
There there are some things in the checklist that not always apply. Uh, you'll notice that some have dots in them, um, and some don't. Those that don't have can be things that could not apply. So you put NA in there.
Right.
But, um, yeah, we could do a workshop also to go through the checklist to see what we think might not need to be there. Or if we need to add things, um, we we might want to do that in a in a workshop for just the planning board. Or in a meeting. I mean, it's, it shouldn't take us that long.
You want to come up with an and hot committee to go through the checklist?
I don't, I don't think we need an ad hoc committee. I think we can just maybe in the in the next meeting. Now, if there and review the checklist and if there are any suggestions, make them to.
Yeah, you can just write little notes on the side and then, you know, it shouldn't take us more than maybe twenty minutes to go through it. Unless there's a ton of changes, which I don't, I don't see that maybe three, four at the most. We might want to add a cut.
Anybody have a feeling for, uh, for what will be in front of us at the night, next meeting? As far as, uh, items to consider, so we could do it at the next meeting if we don't have a ton of work.
What's in front of us now?
There's, there's, I I'm not aware of any, uh, big subdivisions coming up, Sal, and, um. So, uh, I I'm not aware of, I'm maybe Marcus, I'm not aware of any, uh, anything.
Not, not in the immediate future, down the road.
Then let's do it next meeting.
That's, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, that way it give us a a little chance, because I just got my packet, you know?
Okay.
Way ago, and, uh, that'd give us a a chance to really digest it and. Take, take a good look at it and I'm sure it's probably ninety-nine percent there and, uh. That'll give us, uh, just a little chance to discuss it.
Yeah.
Okay.
You know, and and while you're doing that, you can look in the subdivision regulations and you can look at the administrative subdivision checklist. And the major subdivision checklist there. And, you know, if there's something in any one of those, I mean, the only one I gave you was the minor. But it was because it just was the first one I came across, so that's what I made a copy of, but. You know, there are, there are three different checklists, so you can just check all three of them. All right. I don't think it's gonna take us much more than twenty minutes to go through it.
Thank you. Doing all that, by the way, Mark.
Yeah.
You want a motion for this or you just want?
I don't want to be selfish, but you know, it's me that it affects most, so.
Yeah, I know. So actually, it affects all of us, though.
Well, in the end result, it does, but you know, as far as, you know, making out the certification of completeness. And for doing the tracking sheets and so forth, um, it 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 does help me.
Good.
All right, I make a motion that we, uh, put on next month's agenda. To review the checklist, to make any updates, uh, both administrative, minor and major subdivisions.
I'll second that. I knew you would.
So Mark's in favor? Mike's in favor? Bob Green?
Favor.
Mary?
In favor.
Bob?
In favor.
Murphy, yes. Robert?
In favor.
Sal?
In favor.
All right, everybody's in favor. Thank you. Uh, comment requirements for zoning petitions. I don't know, uh.
Uh, well, I I think I had told you before that I had asked for permission to write to the zoning board. To request that they, uh, provide us with full-size copies.
Yes.
Um, and tax response to that was to send us the procedures for it. Um, so I just thought that people might be interested in seeing that, you know. When we say our only job is to refer to the comp plan, it it's it's in here. So, um, it's just informational. It really should have probably been under communications, but.
No, but I think one of the points that that sort of has come up from the last meeting. Was that that the, uh, petitioner applies, gives the the zoning board fourteen copies.
Right, well, that's, that's what we requested.
And and so, but well, I'm just, you know, I know that the, um. Uh, the Corbett, uh, application or petition tonight, we had a, you know, a Scotch tape plan.
Yes.
And so, uh, I went to Edie and asked her, well, you know, what, how come? And so then I asked Ray and Ray said, well, I gave, you know, I submitted fourteen plans.
Right.
So it it, one of the things we have to ask Tac, I believe, is the distribution of those plans went out to. A a whole host of people.
Right.
Uh, that don't comment in in at this stage. And, uh, you know, so are the fourteen plans intended for the zoning board and the planning board? Uh, to to work through the petition as opposed to being distributed to the fire department or whoever.
My my conversation with Tac, uh, led me to believe those fourteen copies only is one copy for the planning board, one full-size copy. So my letter to him was requesting that we get ten full-size copies for the planning board. Which he said at that point, they were in the process of redoing their regulations and requirements. So I felt that it was imperative that we got it to him as soon as we could. So that they didn't make all the changes and then we send him a letter asking him to make another change.
Okay.
You know, what happens is totally up to the zoning board, whether they decide they want to. Um, have their applicants make out an an additional ten copies and send them to us or what. But it actually would only be nine more copies because they already sent us one full copy for the records. So it would only be nine more copies, actually, but. But this was, this was the reply to that request.
Okay, very good. So I guess we'll stand by on that.
Yes. Yeah, that that's actually i- is really communication, so it doesn't need any action.
The the, uh, the next item. Is a late addition, uh, request from, uh, Bob Mushin to add a discussion considering. Uh, the suitability for medical marijuana compassion centers. And I thought we were gonna get, uh. Either particip- participation, uh, from Tony or Peter or somebody. Because I'm not sure where this, um. Need, uh. Uh, came from, or as I read through the Bristol. Zoning requirements, you know, it 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 would be in the business zone and it would be only. And I'm not sure wh- where where it could fit in Little Compton as described. But I'm more, uh, concerned about understanding that the need as it has arisen currently in in town.
I I would make a motion that we table this until we have more information. Uh, I I did read through it. I did, I I saw the email today from Tony, which was a shortened version of what we had received from Bob. Um, but it still leaves a lot of questions that I have that I don't think any of us can answer.
I'll second your motion.
No, I agree with that.
I agree with it because I read through it too and I was, I agree with, like, I have no idea where it would go in Little Compton. I, according to what I read today.
Well, and and I guess the other question that I had is why would we need one at all when we have one just down the street in Tiverton, so.
Right.
Right, right, that's what I, I mean, do we have to have one? I mean, is it gonna be required?
I couldn't tell from reading this, you know?
So I mean, if it's not gonna be a requirement, I don't know why we would have one.
Okay, so the motion is to table that for the moment?
Yeah.
All right.
Seconded.
All right.
Sal beat me.
I think Mark's in favor. I'm in favor. Bob Green?
In favor.
I'm in favor.
Favor?
Bob Murphy's in favor.
Robert?
In favor.
Sal?
In favor.
Excellent. Well, I think that, uh, I think that include concludes.
Now, one more thing that I added, I don't think all packages got it, but I did, I added tracking sheets.
Yeah, I got it.
Yes.
We we can't, we can't talk, we can't vote on them or decide on them because it's not on the the agenda. Um, but we can take a vote to to just kind of go over what my thought process was on these. Um, so we'd, we'd need a vote to approve discussing them, even though we can't act on them.
I'll make a motion that we, that we discuss the tracking sheets.
It's a second?
I second it.
Murph, you second it?
Yeah, Mark, Mark Katie seconds it.
All right.
Okay.
I had a question as well. Um, you you know, when we send letters to the zoning board, uh, with our, uh.
Recommendation?
The recommendations. Is there, uh, is there a way we can get copies of those?
Usually, uh, they used to be, the letters used to be attached to the back of the minutes, but I haven't seen that recently. But I I can, we can, well, Mike can request that Edie attach a copy of the letters to the back of the minutes. We used to do that all the time.
Um, well, it's in the main minutes of the, 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 the next mi- meeting, has it, in the minutes that we consider.
Except that if you remember right, Sal, uh, in a couple of meetings ago, um, one of those votes. That is included in that letter to zoning was incorrect, so.
That's correct.
It is, it is a good suggestion that we, yeah, might to, uh.
Yeah, I'll ask Edie to do that.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, to get back to the tracking sheets. The only thing that I would like to add to the tracking sheets is I I put date recorded, but that's incorrect. It should be date that they're signed because I've had to track several of them. And without knowing when they were signed, it's hard to follow them. Sometimes you can go into the land evidence records and track them back that way. But if we had the date that was signed, when Mike signs them, then I I think it will make it easier for us to to follow through on them. You know, I I try to keep them up to date. There are a few that I've missed, but. Um, you know, it it's basically when you receive, the date you receive it, the date it certified is complete. The date it goes before a meeting, what the decision of the meeting is. And then, you know, if if you need an extension or if there's a decision that the planning board is against, is an appeal process. But the date that they're they're signed is what probably should be added to these tracking sheets. And I'm not sure, I'm not sure of the process for changing it. Um, I would have to ask Carol about that, but, um, if we can add that to maybe next month. Because this, this shouldn't take more than a minute or two, five minutes at the most to.
Yeah, Mark, I don't think I got a copy of the tracking thing.
Uh, I, there were, there were some, two packages missing when I, because I went to the town hall on Saturday and put them in. And there were two packages missing, so.
I got.
I can get you one.
Yeah.
So, so somebody else didn't get one too.
Recorded on that?
What's that?
Does it have the time recorded on that?
Well.
Or is it just a sign, a sign?
It it doesn't have either. And and but I I don't, uh, recording, I was incorrect. I should have said date that it was signed. Because recording is done by the town clerk.
Right.
Okay. Um, but if we know when they're signed, then it's easier for me to track it, especially if I'm trying to track something when Carol's not in. If Carol's in, then I can just go to Carol and she can pull it up on her computer. But if I'm trying to track something when she she's not in, I, without knowing what day it's signed, makes it difficult.
Okay.
We ready to crank it down?
I make a motion that we sign, uh, yeah. I make a motion that we sign, uh, yeah. We s- we send the correspondence to the appropriate folder.
I'll second it.
Everybody's in favor.
In favor.
Alright.
Good night, all. Stay safe.
Oh, we have, we have to have a motion to adjourn. We haven't done that yet.
Go ahead.
Come on, Sal, we're waiting for you. Come on, Murphy, make the motion.
I'll make an emotion there when you turn.
Are we meeting on the tenth?
Yes, we're meeting on the tenth. So we're waiting the, a week, a week after election day.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Yeah.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Second the motion.
We're all in favor.
Okay, cheers.
Bye-bye.